Do you all need to go earlier or anything?
No.
No, you shouldn't.
We're here for the ride.
There were women. I'm trying to be accommodating.
Thank you.
You might be here for a week.
I'm fine.
You said it. I didn't. I didn't say it.
I'll make the motion.
All second. I want a favor. You know, we're... Good. Oh, come on.
Wow. You brought a little bit of lunch out.
Yeah.
Better than they had.
And you don't like garlic, huh?
Um, looks similar to a factory. Can't handle it. Can't handle it like that. We got batteries more than one hundred three.
We have three.
Ten yard.
Yep.
That's one Friday and one this morning.
Okay, we're all charged with the last forty. I put air space back in.
I just made a bracelet, my bracelet.
Yeah, I'll probably get the last two months, three of them, the last one and last week. And when they blow up, they blow up.
That's why I wanted to start changing them out before they...
We discussed that too.
They give acid in there.
Yep.
Trust me. Better this week?
Thank you. I've only turned on three light switches this morning. I don't like your dishware today. It was interesting last week. I cut my finger. And it's right where you kind of where you hold your pen. I thought it was kind of hard time. But every time I turn on a light switch, it's like really hard.
Mine's really fast.
It's even fast. It wasn't last week though. But I kept showing it there with my baby. I think I told him I showed him the hand on the whip.
He's asking for a little something.
Tom, chicken dance, you know that? Here in his family with your bell, no longer.
Yeah, don't remind me. Hey, you be careful. You're gonna end up like this.
I guess it hurts everything you do. This could hurt all summer.
Well, there was kind of two stacks. Kathy helped me because she was on Friday. So she put some of them on Thursday and then I put the rest on Friday. So they were kind of like been two stacks for young.
Get aside this one, please. I'm making a pit game in a little second. I don't think I can.
Just one of two.
Hold it.
That ain't too important.
I didn't see any hurt in that.
Back next. Back again. Been hurting more than the tribe will issue.
I have not.
I see a deal there to Guppy and went, "Get me that."
No, it was pretty similar last week. They gave me a survey to go over with their little phone conversation that I had. Their survey, uh, sees where we go.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say good.
All in favor? Aye. Little caution for a minute. Court card records management is where direction, not the report. If real problem taken, now you beg you figure out how to respond.
Yeah, that last time they said it would take the tribes thirty-seven days. I don't know why those was thirty-seven. It would take the preservation of the storage ones thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah. About the six Indian tribes involved, right? I move we kept that.
Second.
Records management and preservation, not for all favor.
Aye.
Materials request form for this to CD number eight. Where are you getting this?
I don't know. We're just going after the letters, aren't we?
No, no, that's what's happening.
That's just the help.
We saw it. We smelled it.
We did that. In the time we did that smear, take it.
I'll make motion.
All second. All favor. Aye. We'll see if we type three ambulance bids.
Do you want to see the bids again?
Do what?
Do you want to see those bids again?
Whatever.
They suggested that they go with the ESS because all their other ambulances are O-SAGE. And that was an O-SAGE ambulance. It was a little higher. It was one hundred seventy-two thousand, one seventy. The other one was...
One sixty, no?
It was just, yeah, it was just a little bit under like a six hundred dollars difference.
I would, I would...
One seventy-one, six twenty was the other one.
I would really... Check maybe take what they're asking me.
Okay.
What are we on? The ambulance route right now?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped down. I...
I missed. I...
I may have messed you up. You may have said the other one and I jumped down to ambulance, so...
I did too.
Let's go ahead and say it.
Go ahead and take. I move we kept it ambulance bid.
Second.
All favor. Aye.
I'm surprised that was trouble for you.
Now we're opening war bids for again.
Two bids.
The war is fifty. How about can...
He keeps getting deep, weren't you?
Here you go.
Yeah, yeah. I popped a pocket, speed in the pocket. I never... Right cut my finger again.
Kaiser Arena Specialist. Name's Will Tatters. Let's see if it's... Yep, stamp certified nineteen thousand delivered.
Quite a bit of difference now, huh?
That one we bought when I was out there, we ended up costing us six out of a dollar. We could have got it for cheaper.
This is ABI.
Okay.
And it's for, and it is everything, everything's done. It's twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty...
Twenty-six thousand.
Two zero six.
Yeah.
Okay.
I should have said that right.
Definitely.
I don't have the numbers here, guys. Twenty-six thousand, two sixty. Okay. Um, Troy called this morning and wants to table these. They will not have a meeting until during the stock show. So we'll just table it until after their meeting.
They table it in definitely then. Oh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All favor. Resolution for matching taxes, the economy, county force and insurance. County force and we paid out the county general for the salaries being paid out of county cash account.
These are for those salaries that like my employee that I pay out of my cash account. Valerie's employees that are paid out of cash account. Briggs employees that are paid out of the cash accounts. We do have the, it is okay by the auditors that we do this as long as we budgeted in. I talked to Buddy. I don't know if I told you, but Buddy Carroll's wife is a veteran with lung cancer. So he has put us off until they can kind of get some stuff done. He should be here around the last week of August to get our stuff. But I did ask him and talk to him. Jake was in there when I talked to him. He just suggested that we put a resolution through. Yes, we budgeted enough in there for those employees out of the county general. So Jake was in there when he was on the phone. So it's the last week, but it was...
I don't, it's a mother county and they don't, they don't get along officially well, guys, so...
I would rather wait till we talk to them. Because I've got some stuff in mind. I think we will try to do some stuff too. We need to talk to them here before we all, I guess I've got to press a button.
Yeah, we'll be here for the last week of August, Doc.
I would say... No, it's terrible. I would say we just take no action. Yeah, the House, Mr. Dick, want to reach a connection agreement for the motivator.
His daughter's getting married, so he's gonna be out. Megan, I took it up to Megan. Megan looked over it and signed it. There's one place for all of you to sign and then Jay, I'm assuming it's a shared district. All these other ones will be yours.
Is this just Jay's district?
Oh, he gave me one district one. No, just district one.
No, no.
Each, I think they're due each one, like ones I'll do in August, ones due in September, and ones due in October. Okay. This one's just district ones.
Does it say what they're gonna do to buy back?
Buy back certain assets, what is that?
Yeah, yeah, you'll be guaranteed the same buyback.
Really?
You won't lose any equity in it.
Wow.
Or anything, and all that warranty or extended two more years.
Wow. It's a good deal.
Well, if you went on and created like we have on a rotation basis with economy like it is, it would be probably be throughout the year.
I figured it'd affect your buyback.
You got to count it down in that first thing, am I sure?
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Emergency man grant program application for FY twenty twenty.
So I have to table it till next week because I don't have access to what I need to have to print the application. Because we're going through EM, EM grants instead of VOX. And so I have to actually request it to be able to...
That's your thing, Grant. I got two years, so we gotta apply. We applied last year, but it didn't qualify.
There were no mon, there was no money when I applied.
Right.
It was a first come, first served, so there was no money. So that's why we got denied. But just keep applying. I've been told there's more funds there this year because of four oh six mitigation from last year's blood. So there should be more funds available.
That's an understanding of things. So we should make that apply for that. I move we table it.
Second.
All in favor? Probably access even with the district three to remove trees and run away and place on the farm's land. We want to get both of those in one morning. Okay, there's two of them.
There's two copies of each one of them also.
You got one to remove, Dale, Jay?
Another copy.
Oh, gee, yeah.
I'm just trying to... Oh, no. Yeah, I've got, yeah, I want to go.
You better get those moved.
Can we sell those if they're on our property?
I tell you, I'll spread profit with them if we do it, if they don't move them.
I'll let them ice for us. We'll see. I'll make the motion, vote.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Representative, if you may, let's say if you discuss supplemental insurance.
Let you guys have one at each house and all. I'm gonna have Drew ask you guys a couple of questions and then we'll start over the presentation.
So we normally just kind of gauge what you guys have now and just see if we would work for you guys as well as you guys working for us. When do you guys normally do your open enrollment?
November.
November. And how many employees do you have in half of the town?
Right, close to a hundred.
And who do you use for your major medical?
Healthers.
Do you guys contribute to that at all or is it...
They pay a hundred percent of the employees and fifty percent of the employees do topics.
What about life insurance? Do you guys offer a plan for everybody?
County pays for twenty thousand for the employee.
Do they get to take that with them when they leave?
If they are vested, they are offered to be able to take that. If they're not vested, no.
And is it available for spouses and children as well?
There's dependent insurance. There's three levels of dependent insurance. And that's for the spouse and children.
Okay. Disability, short term, long term?
We don't know.
And as far as any other supplement, supplemental voluntary benefits, do you allow anybody to come in?
After it goes through the board, meaning Aflac does, Primarica does, and prepaid legal does for... Uh, what's the name of it? Nigglesville? Nigglesville, thank you. It's real like, Nigglesville.
Do you have a section one twenty-five? Do you have a section one twenty-five?
Uh, no. We have, Primarica takes care of our cafeteria plans when they sign up with anything, but that's always something different.
All right, is this on a total question, do we have? All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. I went ahead and put some referral letters in there from just some of the other places that we have worked with. Most of the time, I think it says Drew and I on there, we do have a team of, of, of guys here in Oklahoma City, so we're local. And then my contact information is stapled there on the front, so when you first open that up, it's going to have our customer service number, it's going to have the claims numbers and things like that. But obviously, if we did come in and offer to you guys, we would ask that everybody called us directly, that way you know that you are speaking with somebody who does speak English, and that we can help you, and if we ever needed to, we can come out here and help as well. So on the next page there, we are with PMA USA, and we're actually a marketing company for Washington National. And we actually go, we have over twelve thousand organizations, including the state of Oklahoma, so all the DHSs, all the DOTs. We also work with a lot of police departments, a lot of school districts around the area, a lot of counties and cities, fire departments, places like that. We are an A-rated company, and on the next page there, it's going to basically talk about benefits. So you guys see the, the value in making sure that benefits are offered to your employees, you guys want to make sure that you have the best employees, and you make sure that they're taken care of as well, as far as their life insurance and for their major medical. So on the next page, as you know, if you were ever diagnosed, or somebody was diagnosed with a critical illness, including cancer, more than likely, that major medical, no matter how good it is, is only going to pay about forty percent of the bills. So what we do is, we step in, and we are able to help with that other sixty percent of things, things that come out of our pocket, like deductibles, co-payments, benefit limitations, if they needed to travel, if there was any special diets, if they needed to pay the house payment, car payment, utilities, and things like that, because they still have to maintain some standard of living, especially if there's a loss of income, and somebody was confined to the hospital. So that's where we step in. We actually pay the employees directly, and they can use this money how they need to, want to, or have to. So again, if they need to pay for those deductibles, or if they need to pay that house payment, they can. On the next page there, we have all of our benefits that we are able to offer to everybody. These are à la carte, so if somebody sat down with us and said, I just want a cancer plan, we are able to offer them just a cancer plan. We also have lump sum, lump sum policies as well, and then we also have like our pulse protection, which is heart, we actually help cover heart disease, stroke, and heart attack. A lot of other supplemental companies don't help with that heart disease. And then we also have a life insurance policy that is completely portable, and that is the best thing about our policies, is that if they sign up with us, they're able to take this with us. If they retire from the county, if they leave the county for whatever reason, they are able to take these with them. On the next page there, it's going to talk about why a lot of people actually go with Washington National. So since nineteen ninety-five, we have actually returned over three billion dollars to our policyholders. So we return a premium option, that if they keep the policy in place for a certain amount of years, we'll actually give their money back to them. Hundred percent if they haven't had any claims, and then if they have had a few claims, we'll give the difference, and then if they actually had to use the whole policy more than what they've put in, we can't cancel their coverage, they can continue to have that, and they will keep, continue to have that at the same rate that they signed up for, the day that they signed up. So that's why a lot of people end up going with us. On the next page, it's going to talk about how we enroll them, it's a secure system, we call it One Source. We're able to go in, everything is electronically done, and then they're going to have to sign on it, obviously. Our next page is going to talk about our section one twenty-five. We are able to offer those things as well, if that would be something that you guys would be interested in. And on the next page, we're going to talk about our Health Advocate Wellness Program. So with all of our policies, it comes with like a one-eight-hundred number, that they can call twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, if they needed help with like navigating through the healthcare system, finding physicians and facilities, things like that. And then on the next page, it's going to talk about our group products. So we're able to come in and offer group products. If you guys said like, hey, we have a bunch of people here that have had cancer, that probably wouldn't be eligible, we can actually come in on a group basis, and if we had the participation, we could do it on a guaranteed issue, to where we wouldn't have to ask those underlying health questions. So it would just be a couple of questions, instead of, hey, have you had diabetes, have you had cancer, have you had any of those type of things, where usually it kicks them out, we're able to offer them on a guaranteed issue basis. So that's about us, and what we are, or what we usually do, is we come in, and I know you guys probably have like the county barns, so we come in and we bring breakfast for everybody, we kind of do a little stand-up, because we know those guys got to get out, get to work. So we do a stand-up, and then anybody that's interested could actually come and sit with us. It takes about ten minutes for them to actually get signed up, if they are interested in enrolling with us. We keep our policies pretty affordable, about a dollar a day for our cancer policy and across the board, and that's just for an individual, with that return of premium. And then, like I said, they are always able to keep that policy with us. If they left the county or whatever, they, there's never an increase in rate, things like that. So we usually try to do a big gift display as well, so anybody that sits with us gets a free gift, and then we have a raffle at the end of the actual enrollment itself. So, I know you guys said that your open enrollment is in November. Is there something, is there maybe a date that we could come in and like, just see if there would be any interest in things like that, and see?
We haven't set our date yet.
Okay.
They should be getting that material to us anytime. It was supposed to have, I think they sent out us an email stating that it would be coming in the next couple of weeks, and that was only about two weeks ago. So then we try to set a date with everybody, I can call you guys, or call this number, and you guys can set it up as a table then, but they don't come in all at one time.
Okay.
They come in individually.
Yes, I know.
It's up to you guys, if you want.
Well, you talk about when we do the insurance fairgrounds, I think that'd be...
Yeah.
And then if anybody wants to come and sit with us, they can, it's no pressure on them. Like I said, we just like to, that way they know that there's other options out there, and they know exactly what we have to offer.
Yeah, we don't come in trying to replace anything that you guys already offer, it's just giving them more options.
Are there questions that we could answer for you guys?
Okay.
Okay. Well, if anything comes up, my contact information is there on the front, you're more than welcome to call me anytime, Miss Nancy, you have my email address, and it's on there as well. We'd love to be a vendor of you guys, and if that's something that we could work out, and if possible, whenever you guys get that email, we would love that.
I'll let you know a date, and I'll, I'll, I'll contact you guys also. I usually contact every vendor and just say, these dates are open. They mean at the fairgrounds, which is, what street is that on?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street. It's going out like you're going out of town west on Fifth Street, and we just leave them there, and we just have tables for all the members set up, and we'll just say, you guys want a, much patient?
We appreciate it. Sound the bell?
This is third, we're thirty-four, so let's just walk over.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Super pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, we're going to sneak out, let you guys finish up for the day, and we appreciate your time.
And if you need a drink of water, where you need it.
I've got some good water.
Thank you, guys, you all have a wonderful day.
Yeah.
It's up to them.
Yeah, it's up to them, for you.
It's up to them, yeah. We've experienced some problems with them all, right?
I don't know if this was, was sent up, I don't know.
Maybe that was here before.
Yeah. Give it out, Jim, they don't look at it, right? In here, it's clean bed.
Payroll is due for you guys Thursday before you leave, if there's ones that, you know, need to be clocked in, it's up on Friday, I just need it by nine o'clock, so I did. Payroll done, and sorry about the misunderstanding of the dates on that.
Moving again.
Hey, I'll go second.
All in favor?